Now, welcome to the Oakham Town Council meeting. Wednesday the 13th of September. Welcome to the council, welcome to the public. Okay, so agenda item one. Apologies. Receive apologies for absence. Do we have any apologies? I will, thank you. Agenda item two, declaration of interest. Any last declarations that forward any disposable inquiry interests that may have in respect to items on the agenda? Two, any other interests that may have in respect to items on the agenda? What's my turn?
I'd like to declare interest in item number sixteen and number twenty-two. Just other.
Oh, that's an interesting, sorry, Martin. Can I clarify what on item fifteen, if I have a lot, I might have.
On how many?
Yes.
Welcome to Oakham Town. And I have an interest in agenda item twenty-five, vote no confidence in the chairman. It's still on the agenda.
Yes.
Even though you've withdrawn or suppressed.
Can I just, for clarifications, does that mean I can't speak for the little thing?
No, it doesn't mean that.
Oh, right. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item three then.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'd like to make a proposal that item number twenty-two is moved forward and not made it exempt.
That's two, we need to take that as two. Yes, agenda item twenty.
The last agenda item, number twenty-five. Sorry, apologies, number two, that means, yeah, sorry.
Twenty-two is exempt.
Yes, sorry, so it's to move agenda item number twenty-five to now, please, and it shouldn't be exempt.
That's the second question.
That's my proposal.
We need to take that in two sections.
Yes, however you want to take it, but obviously the proposal first.
Yes, I did hear that, thank you. My first rule, I would say that it is the clerk's responsibility to set the agenda, that's second rule. However, if there is a seconder for that proposal. That's seconded. Okay, so now a proposal is seconded, so the proposal is to move agenda item twenty-five to make it agenda item three. Covered one and two. All those in favour of moving it? Two, all those against? Or extensions? Motion pause. Agenda item three then is minutes, which are contained in appendix A. To confirm the minutes of the meeting, Harold went in the ninth of August. Do we have any comments? Observations in the room? We'll take that as known. I do have a proposal to accept the minutes. Thank you. And a seconder please. All those in favour? All those against? Or extensions? Motion pause. Agenda item three then is minutes, which are contained in appendix A. To confirm the minutes of the meeting, Harold went in the ninth of August. Do we have any comments? Observations in the room? We'll take that as known. I do have a proposal to accept the minutes. Thank you. And a seconder please. All those in favour? All those opposed? I generally write them for the chairman and members of the board. Chairman's report went out with the agenda. Do we have any verbal reports to be made?
Mine too.
All this tabled for, taken down. Council of Brookes.
Can I ask that these reports are distributed along with other documents supporting this meeting to the members of the public that are present this evening? And also, could I also propose that the final paragraph from the chairman's report is struck from the record? Because it contains what may be described as a defamatory statement. Nobody has alleged any wrongdoing of Leicestershire Police on this council. And the only person who's done that is the chairman himself in a letter to the chairman, which he didn't, to the chief constable, sorry, where he didn't have consent at this council to send. So I'd like that struck and removed from the website because it's causing considerable embarrassment to the council.
It's a chairman's report. The chairman's not retracting anything from the report. The item and the question referred to was discussed with myself, the vice-chairman, the clerk, and the consultant clerk.
And have you read standing order twenty-one, where you're not allowed to write anything in form of written, electronic, or anything without the consent of the full council?
The four people are just mentioning disagree.
You know, you're passing the buck, trying to take the blame off of yourself, and it's unacceptable, Chairman, and I'll shut up before you start getting cross with me. But that, you did not have the authority of the council to cause embarrassment of the council, you put the chief constable.
Counselor Brookes.
Because you do realise he's now subject to a conduct complaint due to the exchanges of your emails.
Counselor Brookes.
To give the visitors, the members of the public, an idea of what I've written, they probably haven't got it.
I've asked if they can be given the report.
Oh, come, slowly, oh, come, it will. Can I read that to them?
Yeah.
Thank you. The judging went well, although protracted due to the BBC film. The coverage from the film crew was very much appreciated by all concerned, including the judges. Thank you letters will be sent to all who made the day a success. Arrangements are in hand for Oakham in Bloom's annual general meeting, which will be held sometime in October. Date and venue to be confirmed. Members of the committee will be attending the awards ceremony at Boston, Lincolnshire on the thirteenth of August today. The Christmas window competition will go ahead to coincide with Oakham Midnight Shopping Event. The annual Oakham in Bloom quiz will take place early in 2018. At that point, I left the meeting early, so I cannot comment on any of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
We, I think the PPWG Promotion Publicity Working Group item was emailed around, I've posted it out? And everybody's got it. You'll see on there, obviously, the Promotion Publicity Working Group has already gotten approved budget by council, and on there you see that we've put in a requirement to spend some of the budget on cups, paper cups. Unless there's any objections to do that, I believe that the clerk can do that under a delegated powers because it's less than a set amount. If anybody wants to challenge it, if anyone wants to do so, no, it's okay. But rather than that, there's a report. Oh, and a point of order, Chairman, I'm just curious as to when the council resolve to move the recording of meetings from that point to that point?
It hasn't.
Right, okay, oh, there's a point of order, Chairman, I'm sorry, Counselor Brookes. You are in breach of our standing orders by recording from your table, if you know you are recording.
No, I'm not in breach of standing orders, I'm in breach of the council's protocol, and I agree that this council, it's becoming a larkin stock. You know, since when it's having the smallest webcam on the table being a breach of health and safety, you know, it's nonsense.
Counselor, as a matter of fact, would we please, please move your recording equipment?
I can't because I already told the council, the reason why it's here is because I am now paperless and I need my laptop to do that, and having that there is not disrupting the meeting, and I request you ignore it, thank you.
Can you maybe note, if Counselor Brooks has refused to remove this equipment and recording table?
Could I ask, can I?
But if the council actually has got theirs working, we wouldn't have a problem, would we? We don't even comply with it. We don't even comply with the transparency code and put audio recording online. So the only way I can protect myself is by recording it myself.
Six times, will you please, please cease? Thank you.
Can I see this? Yes, you got the law. Right. Could Counselor Brooks, if anyone is paperless, I haven't quite got my head on that yet, because he's looking at laptops and other white screens, so I can see, so why can't he do papers?
Because the local legislation acts in 2011 gave councillors the right to save taxpayers' money by asking for all their council agendas and documents to be sent electronically. And that is why I asked for it over a period of three years. And finally, for this meeting, it has happened, which I thank the clerk for.
Well, quite successfully. As a teacher, I was taught of when I was teaching, which is some time ago now, however, when this was done, then everybody was let a laptop. So that we presented her through our work, through the fact, there's a registration there for everything. So all I would say was that, that's fair enough to say that, but everybody on the council should be let, rented or let, or whatever you want to call it. Everyone that's identical to everybody else's, so that there's absolutely no ambiguity about that.
I think, I think, I think we've gone over an off track.
There's something that's going to be looked at because it's unfair to expect the council to pay out their own pockets.
We're going, we're going off track, you're accusing me of being equipment, I can't, I'm not going to physically get out of the movement. Will we note it in the city of our council? Apologies and procedures, I think we've got one more.
My report is very similar to the chairman's. We met the town partnership, I think they're moving forward. We had a very productive meeting, the chairman's here tonight, and I'd like to refute any suggestion that we've offered any money to them. Money was not discussed at the meeting. It was just a way that we could jointly move forward. There was no agreement to do anything, it was just to see, you know, how we could work together for the future. We also spoke to Oakham councilors, and the main reason for doing that was to see how CCTV was viewed from their ends. And this was the suggestion of the leader of the county council. And their general view was that it was reasonably satisfactory, but they had put in their own system to supplement it. So maybe that is something we want to consider in the future, we might want to set up at the working party or something. That just seems for consideration. I've mentioned the leader, we've all been bridges there. Again, it's stated that it isn't working, I don't believe that is the case. We're working hard on that, we had a very lengthy agenda. Again, no decisions were made, but we looked at a number of options, a number of ways we could work together. And I think that is the key to the future. We need to have some partnerships and do things that are productive. So, thank you.
Very much. Are all the reports? Okay, thank you. Agenda item five, council's questions. Any other questions? That's there, and that's been dealt with, thank you. Agenda item six, and it's the trial. What's been tabled?
Sorry, Chairman, could my question be read out and the answer be given for the benefit of the members of the public here, please?
They've been given the agenda.
Do they don't have the answer, do they?
Yes.
They do, they don't normally have the supporting document, but then there's no answer for the recording.
So can I come in on the clerk's report? I know we don't normally, but one of the items out of the supernova, I'd like just to touch on if I may. Because I do, I do, I know, Alison and I have had correspondence about this for quite some time now, it's been going on, the hole's getting bigger. And the surface is getting worse, and I do think, if we could, I would like us to try and agree a cost Alison could work up to without having to come back to council. Because this, we've either got to do this ASAP or shut that piece of equipment off, because there is a huge piece of concrete at the bottom of the slope. And somewhere along the line, a child is going to be on there running, they're going to slip, fall, and crack their head open, and we're going to have a major accident. And I would like us to try and get that sorted tonight, if we, if we could.
That's, that's, that's the deal, the clerk's delegated.
Yeah, it does, in her report, the reason I brought it up, because in the report she says, I will bring this back, I'll get it quite quickly.
If I mess up my delegated powers then.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, can I just say, the large hole, the swing at Cuts Close, I've had the swing removed today. Until, until the wet pool gets refilled.
What about Royce's Track? We're talking about Royce's Track, aren't we?
Yeah, they have, they have done some, haven't they? They've done some of the.
Okay, we, we, so let's just, just to move on then.
Can I just make a comment on the same subject?
Can I please, Counselor Brooks?
Yeah, you're allowed then to speak.
Can I, I was in the middle of talking, will you please let me finish? Thank you very much. With the clerk will deal with the two complaints under the delegated powers. Thank you, Counselor Brookes.
I have noticed that the clerk has said that the players have been inspected again, and we're going to finally see a report. I was just wondering, rather than just saying that we're going to receive the report, that this should actually come or may come to council as an agenda item, because there are lots of points over the many years that have been highlighted, it's traffic coded. And I think there's a lot that needs to be looked at, and some sort of project of maintenance needs to be agreed by council, which may help the clerk in prioritising what actually needs to do. As I've been through there this evening in Cuts Close, and the path is a terrible, shabby state with damage to wet pool in the little children's area, it's dirty and everything. And the damaged equipment, and now another swing, this, you know, it needs sorting.
Can we please move on? We've dealt with that, we've agreed that the clerk has delegated powers, we'll be dealing with that, thank you. Agenda item seven is deputations by the public. Take that as, take that as known then. Moving on, agenda item, agenda item eight, working group steering group reports, this has gone out with the, it's going to be the agenda packs. Do we have any questions concerning the reports? We take them one at a time, neighbourhood plan steering group reports. Yes, Counselor Brookes?
Yes, neighbourhood plan steering group report. Last meeting, the chairman attacked me for raising issues on that report, and it's, and the fact that I pointed out that it was not a substantial report. Basically, it's a diary. The chairman of the neighbourhood plan spoke to me last week and pointed out that he felt that he also felt it was a diary. I was also attacked by the chairman for pointing out somewhat appeared to not be authorised expenditure of forty pounds to Mrs Lewis. And.
That's a threat, that's a danger.
So, no, I'm talking about the report. So I wonder if the chairman would like to retract his comments that the money was coming out of the person's pocket and that it didn't need authorisation from this council.
Firstly, as you've raised that, Counselor Brookes, you've made allegations again, I will, I will respond, even though all of this comes later to meeting, because I suspect you have quite jumbled me to that. First of all, and this is for members of the public, so they can hear what's being said. First of all, Counselor Brookes has pointed people to his recording the meeting. I have watched that recording three times, and I find it hard to watch it, and that will show quite clearly that what Counselor Brookes has just said is not the truth. That's on the recording, you can watch it yourself, obviously, and make your own points on that.
No, sorry, that's what you, that's what you said to me, that it didn't need approval from council and it was coming out of their own pocket. I'll find it now if they give me the white light, so.
Counselor Brookes.
And I'll play it.
Counselor Brookes, please.
I'm getting fed up with you calling me a liar, Chairman.
He said it's second.
He did, he said I wasn't telling the truth.
Well, can I just carry on? Now, you have said, I told, in one of the emails, now I told the chairman, this is, this is neighbourhood plan steering group. The chairman wants to speak to OTC members about the plan, neighbourhood plan, due to your lack of report to councils. He feels public deputation is the only chance. In his email response, which I can, due to my need to, he makes the following comments. Neither of these statements are true. I know that you.
That's why he's not there tonight, because you're a bully, Chairman. Because he told me he would be here tonight to speak to us.
Counselor Brookes, please.
No, I'm fed up with you reading things and just, you know, Charles, I'm concerned you are making that up. The man stood outside an estate address and told me exactly what I had said.
Neither of these truths, these statements are true.
It's not funny, Counselor Brookes.
I know that you report to the council through the meeting schedule, and I also know that I'm on the way to address the town council other than my means of public deputations. Let's go to the other one, where you say about your allegation was a conduct complaint. At the last council meeting, Counselor Haley lied and treated me with no respect, both serious breaches of the code of conduct and the learning principles. I'm not sure Counselor Haley can ever be honest in the council meeting. During the meeting, Counselor Haley distributed a report detailing events and activities carried out by the neighbourhood plan steering group. This is a rolling report, the report can be found here, and it gives the point where it is. I noticed the person named Lewis had been paid forty pounds. I attempted to ask Counselor Haley why this expenditure had not been approved. I thought council, because a working group cannot spend any money without prior consent of the council. Counselor Haley was very rude and disrespectful and gave a dishonest reply. He said the payments did not need to be approved by council and accused me of attacking the working group. At the next week's meeting, members have been asked to approve the forty pound payments and what looks like additional travel costs, not listed in the report, written under supervision by the council. Well, first of all, again, if anybody wants to watch the recording, make a draw for a review of what was said and wasn't said. However, I did not say any of those things, but the tape on YouTube clearly shows me saying that the member of the steering group paid for the, paid for this out of their own pocket.
That's what you just told me I didn't say.
Paid, that, they paid for it out of their own pocket, and then, having inferred with the clerk, that it would be coming to the September meeting.
But that's not what you told me in your reply, Chairman.
And then soon for.
You stitched it up and brought it back tonight, that's being dishonest. Your, your thing was, you quite, quite flippantly said it's coming out her pocket, basically shut up, Counselor Brookes, for pointing out that we didn't have authority.
Again, 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 you're interrupting.
I know, because you're annoying me and wasting our time. You are totally wasting our time, because you've just confirmed something that you denied that I said.
Please, please.
Or you said.
Please, please, I'll now read out the email from this.
But this, all this stuff is not on the agenda, Chairman, and it causes problems. Because you should be sharing these emails with people.
Steering group meeting in June, I think. It was specifically designed for people working on neighbourhood plans. I felt someone ought to attend this and managed to make arrangements quite late in the day so that I could attend. When I applied to go on the course, which Lizzie, who was the chairman at the time, the steering group, had notified us of and which took place on July the 10th. I was told by somebody from NACR that the forty pounds had to be paid the next day, the deadline for membership. This I paid electronically through my bank accounts and attended the course in Rothwell accordingly. After this, I then asked if I could be reimbursed, and was told that it would have to be cleared by the steering group and the town council. I then put in my paperwork and a claim to Alison, the clerk, not sure when exactly, end of July, question mark. We're not in time for any town council meeting until one in September 13th. Alison told me that the claim would be dealt with at that meeting. Just to make it clear, I won't read the rest of it. I think that's all now, Counselor Brookes, we'll now move back to the agenda.
Yeah, and could I then ask that we have proper reports from the neighbourhood plan? I won't argue the point of my discussion with the chairman, and I will speak to him when I see him next, but it's disappointing that after speaking to you, he retracts everything I say, like everybody else that you speak to. Because you're a bully, sorry, Chairman. You are. He told me he would be here tonight, why is he not here tonight? I don't make these things up, Chairman.
Chairman, point of order, bullying.
Bullying is exclusion, and it's everything that you and Counselor Haley do or attempt to do.
I can help with listening to that.
Can you make a note, please, that I've just been called a bully?
Yes, please.
I think people already wear it back.
I'd like that to take place, thank you. Do we have any other comments on the neighbourhood plan steering group report?
No.
Moving on to the, sorry, moving on, do you want my?
We're going to still discuss that, you know, with, with the wrong, where it should have.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I simply, because I felt the members of the public needed to know that this is the same time.
Thank you.
Finance report, any questions? Policies and procedures?
I only have one question. Not necessarily so much on the report, and if I'm out of order, I'll sit down and I'll pick it up later on. I am very concerned that for quite a while now, out of the four members that should be on this committee, there are only two. And it seems to be that we do have committees of one and two, and it doesn't, doesn't sit well, because that's not, that's not correct. Well, sorry, we only have working groups, don't we?
Can I just respond to that? Because the council has not set any definitive numbers for people on working groups, it's not a committee, it's a working group, and there are no definitive members.
I should come back and tell that later then, Chairman, thank you.
So we're on to.
I'm back.
Are you referring to policies and procedures reports?
Yes, no, sorry, I'm.
So I'm now on to then promotion.
That's, sorry, that's my.
Promotions and publicity work.
Yeah, sorry, Chairman, I've already mentioned earlier on, probably a bit of a hat sink, that our report was sent around, and we're looking to spend money on cups.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Do you need a?
No, because it's such a small amount, we've already got the budget, and we have delegated authority to the clerk, it's less than three hundred pounds, it's okay.
So that is in order. Thank you. Counselor Brookes?
I, I had an issue with saying that, no disrespect to the councillors, saying that's in order. On our website this week, I noticed that a very small paragraph of the transparency code has appeared in our policies and procedures without any knowledge of the council. And in there, it says very clearly that all matters of expenditure must be approved by the council. Now, at the previous meeting, we approved a sum of money for specific reasons for the promotions group to spend, that's now changed. So I think out of just making things as sure that they're right, but I think that that expenditure, which is in there as working groups are not allowed to make decisions on spending, it should be the full council, but that is just limited, that the council agrees with that expenditure. I'm not objecting to it, but I think it should be limited and.
I would run back at that, thank you, Martin. On the back of that, at this point then, I would probably propose that the promotion publicity working group document is accepted by council, and look for a shared hands to support that the expenditure came out. That's my proposal, Chairman.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favour? Carried.
Thank you, can I tell you, Chairman?
Thank you. Moving on then, are there any comments on the promotion publicity working group? Moving on then.
Can I just say thank you to Sally Ann for all the hard work she did for the council.
agenda item nine. Poppy's point for number post.
Oh, sorry, I'm not allowed to speak yet.
Well, just moving on to agenda item nine.
That's what I wanted to speak about, something, I was just thinking a bit quick.
Okay, well, can we, your procedure would be to, for me to invite a person to present the paper, speak first, and I'll come back to you. So this, this is, this is Adam's paper, so would you care to lead on?
Chairman, I've got nothing further to add, even though it's not my name, like, that's about the idea, this became from Mark, Counselor Brokes. And I brought this in here to show what the size of the leak they are, this is them.
um and look for a show of hands to support that the expenditure came out, that's our proposal, chairman.
Second.
Second.
Anybody in favour? Carried.
Thank you, councillor, thank you.
Moving on then, no other comments on the promotion publicity working group? Moving on then.
Can I just say thank you to Sally Ann for all the hard work she did for the council.
Poppies, point for number post.
Oh, sorry, I haven't had to speak yet.
Well, I'm just moving on to agenda item nine.
That's what I wanted to speak about, so I was just doing it quick.
Okay, well, can, can we, your procedure would be to, for me to invite a person to present the paper, speak first, and I'll come back to you. Okay, so this, this is, this is Adam's paper, so would you care to move on?
Uh, chairman, I've got one further to add, even though it's not my name, like, that's about the idea, this came from, from Martin Capper Brooks. Um, and I brought this in here uh to uh to show what the sizes really they are, this is them. And there is a little bit of further information, um, what it is on here, which will impact on this agenda item. Uh, the, the second proposal is that the clerk to the council request permission from the county council highways to display the poppies, that will not be required. Third item is that the council requests the clerk to arrange for the poppies to be in place over commemoration in November and approve expenditure of one hundred county installations, that cannot be required or should not be required either. Because I approached Rutland County Council, um, in my capacity as councillor, in relation to this agenda item, to make a lot of full and up to date information. And this is what they said to me. Feel like a joke, isn't it? Um, it's, this is what came from highways. All the poppies, so these things here, must be a minimum of two point three metres above ground level. All pop, poppies, all poppies shall be suitably attached to prevent them becoming dislodged by weather, cable ties, which were provided with them. All poppies must be placed by parish volunteers from each parish. They're being quite stringent in that, I think it's because probably if we start engaging workmen, then it might require permits and then looking at.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that, so that's why they, they can help us out. Only the single red poppy as distributed by the Royal British Legion will be permitted, so we're not allowed to put anything else up. No poppy shall obscure visibility displays or any road signs, all pup, puppies, like, all of these must be removed by December the thirty first. And all of these must be, be removed by volunteers from each parish, including cable ties. So if the council agrees with, um, I'm quite happy to, to put the cable tie, that these items upon that post, as per what the Rutland County Council said, and I'd like to thank Rutland County, in fact, I saw um the leader, uh, no, I saw the chief exec earlier on. And I did thank her for, for some of this stuff.
Before I take a question, I just ask, did you clarify when I asked you to clarify the county council, did when they said the volunteers, I thought that you meant that it couldn't be put up by contractors?
Um, I know what you're saying.
This, this, yeah, this is what I received.
Oh, I'm sorry, so they have, they have confirmed, I did ask Allison to check.
But it's not.
It's as opposed to them.
Yeah, or was it, had we get planning permission, which is what our contract would have to be.
Most big.
And, and response, just.
For all of us. I would absolutely one hundred percent support this, I think it's brilliant, and seeing that, we might be able to use it for more than one year.
Yes.
So I think it's a really good investment, but I am a bit worried that the volunteer has to do it, because that's quite a two and a half acres to do something.
Yes, only eight group ones.
Well, just that, could we not borrow something like a cherry could get from somebody?
I thought.
No.
Oh, I guess, it's only eight, it's only eight.
It's quite high, I mean, I don't want to have an accident with.
Is that the Adam, don't matter.
I think, I think, I think, councillor, can you, can you, just on that point, Mrs, can, can you give assurance that you will put them up in accordance?
I, I am, I am trained, I have, I have worked at height, and also, I believe I would still be covered by the town councils with liability insurance anyway. So, but I mean, it's, at the end of the day, you know, I'm six foot, so it's, and then we are two foot, it's not, it's not that, and then one little step up that we do footing it, it'll be fine.
Thank you.
Just to add a bit of humor to it, um, to take uh a note from a councillor at the London County Council. I was going to say, if it's going to be put up by contractors, has it got to go out to tender, please?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking, the more we worry about this, we can put out three. Councillor Brooks?
Um, yes, I, I'd just like to say thank you to Adam for sorting this out, because it was, I was approached by a ward member to bring this to council, and it was difficult. Um, but it's, it's now at council, and I fully support it. I did offer to put them up myself, and I'm glad that Adam has now come to the, I do hope I counted the line post correctly, but uh but the other point on there is that um there is a deadline put on there, which we have to ignore. Um, I did pass on the information, is that the lady who's in charge of the um Rutland and Leicester Shear branch has these in her garage waiting for a phone call from Allison to send them, and she will invoice if the council approves any amount, because it's a donation um for a good cause. Um, we don't have to stick to the three pounds, it was just suggested that amount, he could send less. Sorry, Mrs Lucas, do you have a problem?
Thank you, will you, will you please address your comments through the chair?
I'm just finding it, I just, she's sitting there yawning away.
Will you please address your comments through the chair?
Sorry?
Can we please just?
So I, I fully support it, and I was willing to help, but if Adam is willing to do it, then I will, I, I don't need to, but if he wants some help, I will.
Can we, let's, let's all come in a little bit, please. Right, do we have, can we have a proposal?
Yes.
And proposal, second up?
Can we have a proposal for the amount?
Proposal, just one, just the actual values fifteen copies, four copies.
That's the first proposal. Your proposal, second up for that is, I think Paul was just in front of you, all those in favour? And that's unanimous?
Definitely, Paul, you're right.
Right, generator item ten, rule one, commemoration, commemoration events. I've gained animals of pain, ever used to feel like.
Yes, there's, there's no copies in this one. Obviously, everyone, most people are aware, should I say, not everyone, most people are aware of the commemoration that's been going off in the county for the last four years. It's coming to a wind down now, or a close, as two thousand eighteen approaches, and basically the paper speaks for itself. Um, and they are looking for some uh, some money. Um, I actually, they did, uh, I have seen the grant pack on it, I thought, I bought it with me, but I don't think I actually have, but they've um they put in a request to the uh, to the Arts Council Board for money to help this happen, but this would be something that would benefit the whole of county and certainly people in Oakham, and it's just asking for the council budgets this amount of money for next year. And so, over there's two thousand pounds off again.
Uh, thank you, yes, please.
Uh, I have no problem with this.
Don't need to stand up on this.
Uh, well, thank you, it's hard words, I have to say, thank you. Uh, it's added at the bottom, the money could come from uh P P W G for next year, so I have no problem with uh adding two thousand pounds into the commemoration, thanks. I look for a second.
Please, I went, let's, let's just.
Yes, I mean, this is a good cause, and I support it. However, a couple of thousand pounds on one event just disappeared, uh disappears, I mean, and we've sort of talked before of cost benefit, um, you know, are we getting enough benefit for two thousands? Should we consider a lesser sum? I don't really like talking like this, but um it is public funds, two thousand pounds that people have put into the precept. And, you know, is it, is it the right way of going forward? Perhaps we need a stronger policy, I don't know.
I think council skipper.
Um, I don't know a lot about history, but I do know that some of the regiments from round here lost a lot, a lot of able young men. And I would imagine that anybody who's lived here for any length of time will have lost somebody in that war, and I would support this one hundred percent. And I don't think two thousand pounds is a lot to give for such a, a noble cause, where so many young men died.
Thank you. Councillor Brooks, I'm.
Um, I don't dispute the meaning behind this and that, but I would dispute that it's actually supporting what the councillors just said. Um, it's a arts project, um, going on about the cost. I've read the report, no disrespect to the councillor, it says it will benefit the whole community of Rutland. We're not here to give benefit to the community of Rutland. The precept should only be spent on the benefit of the residents of Oakham, and that's not me saying that, that's the local government act. Um, and it's also a ticketed only event, although it's free, so how can it be for the benefit of the whole of Rutland when it's going to be ticketed and rationed? Um, I don't see how it can benefit the whole county, uh, so, community, sorry. Um, also, um, it mentions, and obviously I'm just assuming something from the the words at the end of the report, that the funding could come from the Sill or the S one oh six. Is the councillor referring to the money we already hold, where six thousand pounds has already been spent on a town centre manager? And most of the rest is earmarked for footpassing Cuts Close. So I, I, I can't support this, and I don't want people to think that I'm against, you know, anything to do with Remembrance Day or anything like that, because I don't, or commemorating what people did in the war. I'd be the first person to run away and hide, you know, I think they've done a wonderful thing for us, but I don't think we can support this, I'm sorry, because of the laws.
Laws.
Yes, the Local Government Act, that we can only use the precept. Now, if it's coming out of that money, and it can be shown where the money's coming from and not the precept, then I would support it. It should come from sponsorship, and if anything, if it's for the benefit of the whole of Rutland, they should be going to Rutland County Council for this funding, and unfortunately, they don't fund anything these days, community wise.
I take Martin's point that benefits for spending that amount of money. Um, I'm fairly agreeable with money myself, and I'd get value for money, but um this is a one in a hundred years event. Basically, we're coming into twenty eighteen, and I think you should put on some sort of um display of loyalty and thanks for people who died during that war. I think two thousand pounds is not a lot to spend once in a hundred years.
Thank you very much.
I can't have that, I can't go back anymore.
Do we have any, any other comments?
Uh, just to councillor, just to answer the point raised, um, no, in answer to your question, I haven't thought about the money that's sat to do with this. Fifty six thousand, where some sort of payments, um, S one oh six is a lot more broader, and that's, that wasn't S one oh six money anyway, it was completely different, lots of money. Um, as regards law, we are perfectly within our rights to spend money however we want, with the general power competence, which this council still has, correct? Okay, so there's no issues there, we're not doing anything for the welfare, never to subject anyone to welfare. Um, the overall budget was estimated at ten K, two thousand pounds is a percentage of that. Um, but I think we're also approaching there, or local people, that same sort of thing. Um, I believe in actual fact, the cost of may have escalated, escalated maybe fifteen thousand, because putting on this sort of event, apparently it does cost a lot of money. And in relation to the point that councillor Ian Peter have raised about um directly benefiting people of Oakham, yeah, I, I possibly see that, and one of the things that they were looking at doing was possibly bringing in professional recording. So when these play, when these players created, it wouldn't just happen in Oakham. It's the idea that it'd be sort of shown around the county in three different locations. Um, in Oakham, it would want to be shown in the castle grounds. So, so that is basically, I think, answers the point that we raised, um, so, and that's it, it's up to the council to decide. If they want to roll it back and say, no more than two thousand, or we're gonna get fifteen hundred or a thousand, then fine, if the council choose to do that, then that's, that's great. Thank you, Jenny.
Chairman might have a point of order. Um, the power competence doesn't give us the power to overturn what it says we can't do. It's now clearly stated in the new copy of the um Good Counselor Guide, because there's a lot of confusion. The power competence doesn't give us the right to do anything we want. If the Local Government Act, Localism Act, or any other act says you cannot do it, we don't use the power competence. The power competence is, sorry, I, can somebody get me the Good Counselor's Guide, please, so I can read it out, because the local clerk is shaking his head. It is, I know.
It wasn't that good point.
Yeah, that is the point, I would like that clarified, and, and if somebody could get the book and read out that paragraph, it will show that you cannot ignore the law of the land, if it says you can't do it. What it, what it, what it does is it permits you to do something that the Local Government Act doesn't say you can't do.
That is not the agenda item we.
Now, I raised the point of order, which was because, because we constantly misuse the power competence. If that's what it's called, I can't remember.
Have you spoken?
And I made a request for the clerk to get the um, the Good Counselor Guide, please.
Will you please, sit down?
So, no, when a point of order is raised, the clerk is supposed to respond to councillors and say, yes, you're right, or no, you're not, not just sit there shaking their heads. I would like it read out, the paragraph from the Good Counselor Guide, no, because I have no internet connection.
Please address any comments to the chairman, please sit down, councillor Brooks, I've given one or two opportunities.
So you're going to ignore my request to have a legal point clarified?
It's not part of the agenda item.
Well, it is, because the councillor just said we had the power to ignore the Local Government Act.
I didn't say that.
You did, the power competence, you said.
Councillor didn't say.
Well, no, you said it permitted you, and I'm saying the council's ignoring the Local Government Act by going down my line.
Please, please.
You said I could speak, so can I just say, I propose that we here donate twenty to the night time, the two thousand pounds, thank you. If somebody will second it for me.
Can we just, let's, can you just read the proposal out, just so the clerk can?
Thanks, I've got to turn over the page and ready this for the next item, sorry. Um, can I sit down to read it?
Yes.
The Oakham Town Council does imma contribution to the two thousand eighteen two hundred hanging budget for the sort of two K for this event. I don't understand the next bit, so I should just leave it at that.
That's fine. Happy with that, but.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much it, the second bit was just to say, go on.
Yes, can I, um, I mean, I think an important point has been made here, and maybe if there was uh an addendum or rider to the proposal, that subject to it being um a legal payment, some phrase, and we can do our homework afterwards, thank you.
Yep, after that.
So you're ma, you're making, can you read out the, you'll make an amendment to the proposal?
Or just, just adding, subject to it being a legal payment?
Can, for clarification, Alison, can you read the full proposal before I say second?
My O T C email, the contribution in the two thousand nineteen ninety budget, so that would be two thousand pounds subject to it being a legal payment.
You're all quite clear.
Legal contribution. Legal contribution.
And not even approved, which is the mark.
Yeah.
Clear what the proposal is, can I have a second?
Of course.
No, I think, I thought it was.
Please, please, propose it.
Don't, don't we have to take the amendment first, chairman? Let's take the amendment first, unless Alan's going to accept the amendment.